We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, I've asked Alderman Rob Heberlin to please lead us.
Father God in heaven, we first thank you for your presence with us tonight. We ask that you guide our discussions and we ask you to help us make the decisions as best for this city of Taylorville and its citizens. And we ask also, Father, that you be with those that are out there protecting us tonight, whether it be the policemen or the firefighters, and for that same protection to be with the other city workers that start their shifts tomorrow. But thank you for your presence with us. We thank you for our Savior, Jesus Christ. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please do you want me to mean the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coons.
Here.
Martin Boda.
Here.
Okay, seven Aldermen present, one absent. First, we have a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda. We've got Alderman Dorchenaz, second by Alderman Jones. Comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes will be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held June 3rd, 2013, minutes of the emergency services committee meeting held June 6th, 2013, minutes of the personnel committee meeting held June 6th, 2013, minutes of the Lake Airport Committee meeting held June 13th, 2013, and minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting, also held June 13th, 2013. Intertain a motion to approve those minutes.
To move.
Alderman Burdell, second.
Second.
Alderman Bud, discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero, and I would ask the city clerk to please swear Mr. Nichols in. Not swear at him, swear him in.
Is there a longer process for decades?
Yeah.
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to which you are appointed according to the best of your ability? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob, first. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a resolution. This is to levy an additional tax of .02 percent to the library purchase of sites and buildings, for the construction and equipment of buildings, for the maintenance, repairs, and alterations of library buildings and equipment. Second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we've got discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part to the following listed motions, ordinances, or resolutions. First thing we have tonight is the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners have been short a person for several months, as I've been looking for someone to replace him, and I finally found a good man, I believe. I got Ron Nickel. Ron has served this community for several decades as a firefighter and as a fire chief. And his knowledge would be a tremendous asset to the board, so I would look for a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Nickel to the Table Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. Second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance has to retain the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works.
So moved.
Alderman Jones, second.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Alderman Heberlin.
Question.
Sure.
Each year we pass this, and each year I seem obliged to vote no. I haven't done so yet. I was gonna do so tonight, but it appears, and I wanted to ask Attorney Mano, is it state statute that we really have no choice, that we have to pass this?
That is correct. In June of each of your years, you have to pass the prevailing wage ordinance, so that any contract for public works for this city, you have to incorporate it in that contract that they have to follow your ordinance and the prevailing wage. And that prevailing wage is determined each month, so if the contract, you adopt this tonight, you're required to do it in June by state statute. If you have a contract in July or August, you'll have, the clerk will get the updated numbers, and that's what gets incorporated into your contract with your vendors. So it is required.
Some of these wages really seem to be inflated by themselves, but if you compare what was paid last year and then what was paid this year, there's 3% wages in a wide variety of categories, and it just seems we're trying our best to kind of hold our own, and here we're being forced to take on and pay wages that are greater than what we are paying our own employees. Plus, the increase is greater than what we're paying our own employees.
And Alderman Heberlin, those are set by the Department of Labor here at the state of Illinois, so you have no input on that either.
Well, I understand. I thought I would speak to it, because it just seems like this is another case of a mandate that's forced upon us, and we really have no way to be responsible and vote no.
Correct.
Exactly right, and I agree with you. It is very frustrating, because like you say, we work so hard to try and keep it low here on a local level, and then our hands are tied, and we have no other recourse.
Some of these categories are twice what we pay our city employees. Twice. Plus, in that particular category, all of the increases are almost 3%.
We could repair twice as many roads. There's a lot of stuff we could do.
And without this, we probably would have about 30% more money to do just that.
Exactly.
Probably, I think that's the number that we've tossed around in the past. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we've got discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part to the following listed motions, ordinances, or resolutions. First thing we have tonight is the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners have been short a person for several months, as I've been looking for someone to replace him, and I finally found a good man, I believe. I got Ron Nickel. Ron has served this community for several decades as a firefighter and as a fire chief. And his knowledge would be a tremendous asset to the Board, so I would look for a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Nickel to the Table Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. Second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending Section 1-4-1 and adding a new section, 1-4-5, to the Taylorville City Code regarding the general penalty, alternative prosecution procedure, and prosecutor's fee/attorney fees. Intertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, with a comment.
Alderman Walters, second.
Second.
Alderman Burdell, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Walters.
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be directed at our city attorney. In looking at this, if we look at our city ordinance violations as far as the dollar amount for the penalties, do those amounts now include the amount that would go for the attorney fee for prosecuting the ordinance violation?
Well, let me explain this ordinance a little bit and maybe help you with that, because this is another mandate. Only this mandate has been come down by the Illinois Supreme Court. These rules were put in place in 2011, December. Your system has not been up to par with what the Illinois Supreme Court had required it to be done. That's why this ordinance is before you, and I'm asking you for a leap of faith here. I prepared that. I think that you'll now be in compliance with the Illinois Supreme Court rules, particularly with the over-the-counter ticket settlement resolution that you guys have developed. It's been pretty effective for you folks, too, where a person can come in on some non-traffic, non-conservation-type tickets, can come in, pay the fine, city clerk's office, and not have to go to court. Of course, if you go to court, then there's court costs that you don't get to really share a whole, a lot in that. So, for example, a fine of $250 results in a court cost of $200 additional for that particular offense. You have a number of offenses here. What you see before you here is the new ordinance violation complaint form and notice to appear that I put together. I've spoken with your police chief, we've talked to the city clerk and the mayor, and we may have to do a little bit more, maybe you might want to add some more, and this is maybe something can be discussed to your ordinance committee level this Thursday, but this is the format that now the police officers will be given, folks, because the Supreme Court says you have to spell it out in black and white, what your rights are, how you can go about taking care of these tickets over the counter. What I've added, what you're getting at, Mr. Walters, is that, and I've done this for other communities, but the, there is a statute provision that for every conviction in court or a bench trial, if you will, the state statute allows you to tag on 25 more dollars if you have an ordinance to, in effect. You didn't have one, so I'm suggesting we put it in here, so it's an additional 25 bucks that'll go in the city coffers for every guilty plea that we might be able to secure or a bench trial.
Over and beyond these figures on here.
Over and beyond that. Then, the subparagraph B there, and I think this is gonna be a topic of discussion Thursday at your ordinance committee, there is a provision, and why, this is right out of the statute, so it's not that I'm the one that's gonna decide. The statute says the city attorney can return, can retain collection agents to go after your judgments or attorney fees if you have an ordinance in effect, so I've got it there. So if you, if we decide to do that from time to time, you've got something in place. We have to have this language in here to set up this alternative court appearance to allow us to do what we've wanted to do all along. The other thing in here is just bringing up your penalty clauses as your general penalty in accordance with the new revisions to the statute. Now, you'll notice there on 1-4-1, you used to have, right now you have a minimum of $100, meaning that if you have an otherwise designated fine for a particular offense in your city code, for whatever reason, then the minimum will, I mean, this general penalty will apply at 100 bucks. I've suggested to go up to 250 minimum. What it does, it helps subsidize the cost of prosecuting these things, because $25 attorney fees is not gonna, not gonna take care of it, but if you have a little higher minimum court cost, I mean, penalties, then it does help subsidize the system. That's not to say that you can't come back as you go from time to time and specific offenses, like you see on here, you've got like cigarettes or weeds is $100. You can, you can keep it at 100 bucks, it's just that only applies if you don't otherwise designate a fine. And I'm recommending that you do it to the minimum 250. Normally, we would do this, I think, take it to your ordinance committee for discussion, but because the Illinois Supreme Court is mandated, and I've actually been asked by the judiciary to get us in, into conformity, so I'm asking we do that now, and we can always tweak it later.
Well, another question on B then, for the city attorney. If we have Mr. Berry serve papers, then we also get to recoup that cost also.
No, that, well, you get that anyway, because his court cost, Mr. Berry, the private process server, is added to the cost for the court proceedings.
All right. And then the last thing I had in regards to, but this would have to be discussed at the ordinance committee. I'm not particularly enthused, I know I participated in some of these fees, I think we need to raise some of these fees for the first, second, third, and fourth.
And you have that right to do that. This is just what is existing right now, and so we put that on the form. So I would suggest, because I know your police chief is, is sitting on a whole bunch of old forms, and they're pretty expensive, so perhaps at your ordinance level, you can decide if you wanna raise some of these, so when it goes to the printer, you'll have it up to date rather than have to do it again.
All right, thank you.
Meanwhile, this'll at least get us in the right track. I've given you a copy of the Supreme Court rules that you could, that you read.
Alderman Heberlin.
It, it seems that some of this is going to the ordinance committee. Wouldn't we be better served to have the whole package come out in one piece rather than to approve part of it, to only have to perhaps amend other parts of it later? If the fee structure is gonna be changed, maybe.
But the actual forms that the officers are doing on a daily basis today, they have to have the right forms in place to, to do that process. And what I've done in the, I've, I've taken the liberty of taking all your forms that has been going forward in your ordinance prosecution and trying to streamline them and making them simple with the mayor's blessing, is to get them in conformity with the new Supreme Court rules and to satisfy the judiciary up there that when they see these notices, it has the right language on them. So we need to get that in place, but you can later come back and change it, as Alderman Walters was asking. Go $200, $300 for a particular offense rather than this.
And, and, I mean, that, that's my point. If, if we think we're gonna change it later, do we wanna pass on this ordinance?
Okay, the ordinance itself, we won't be amending the ordinance itself. All we'll be doing is amending the form. That's why we're gonna just...
The complaint form, right. Just this one.
Yeah, just this. This, this gets us in compliance. This is what we'll discuss before we have it printed, if we wanna raise those fines, if there's anything that we wanna add, if George has anything that he wants added on this form, if Dave wants anything added on this form, that's what we're gonna discuss Thursday night.
Tonight, we're only acting on the ordinance and not on this form?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
One final thing, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
I do appreciate the city attorney providing us with the Westlaw. It was interesting reading, and I read all the stuff that you, you recall fantastic experiences.
And that is a mandate for the Supreme Court, just as powerful as this Department of Labor, if not more so.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Bring us the city attorney updates.
First thing, gentlemen, I wanna bring to your attention, I think you were gonna have an annexation ordinance tonight for adoption. I'd asked the mayor and the clerk to pull that from the agenda, because there's been some recent changes in the law, in particularly that particular ordinance. We have to dot another i and cross another t before you can, I think, legally adopt that particular annexation ordinance, and he's well aware of that, and we've got to get the form put together, and he'll probably get it republished and read back on the agenda, because it was not in compliance with the new statute, so. Secondly, you had told me to file an action against a local property owner because of a lot of trash and stuff, junk, debris, and so forth, and it was filed. That person was served with summons. Is George behind me here?
Yes, he is.
He was very busy today, because they went out and there was a dumpster purchased, and the dumpster, well, I'll let George kinda tell you a little bit more, but the bottom line is, George asked me with the mayor's consent that I file an emergency motion today, which I did, and it's going to be, I'm asking the court to hear that on this Wednesday. This is what we see, if you can see this, this is what George took photographs of the property that the, that was at the house. It's a matter of public record, it's on file, the Christian kind, along with these photographs I filed, and the initial ones, because the trash, some trash was removed out of the garage, put into the, put into the dumpster, and then left the garage door open. So then, that triggered a lot of phone calls to George, from the neighbors, of the smell and the mice and so forth, so thus, we're asking the judge to give us a little earlier court hearing, so give you folks the permission to go in and get it cleaned up. I think that's what George is intending to do. Do you wanna add anything, George? You don't wanna do it, I know, but it's gotta get...
We've served a bunch of stuff since he evidently must have served our bus.
He did.
There's a whole bunch of people down there.
He picked it up.
Don't know where they come from, but they're working on it.
They're working, okay.
Because he picked up the summons today about 4:15, he was gonna go serve it right then, so.
All right.
Does everybody know where his property's located?
Yes.
I mean, I don't, okay. So I think we're handling it the best way we can, as expeditiously we can.
Good.
Any questions about that? Okay. That's it. Except for the closed session.
Okay. Any other questions for the city attorney? Okay. Moving on to mayor updates, and I have really nothing, other than just to let you know as far as the fire chief position, I'm gonna ask that resumes be turned in by July 8th, Monday, July 8th, at 4:00 p.m. I'll be doing some advertising here in the next week or so, and like I say, the idea is just to get some resumes, to take a look at them, and to discuss them a little bit, and if things go right, it's my intent to appoint the new chief by the August 5th city council meeting, so. That's not in stone, but that's the intent at this point, so. And that's all I've got, unless anyone has questions. If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part to matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we'll start off with emergency services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Emergency service, and it looks like five motions. First one was a motion to change the date of emergency services and personnel committee meeting from Thursday, July 4th, 2013, to Tuesday, July 2nd, 2013. I'd like to make that a full motion.
Okay, you have a second on that? Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Next motion was to allow Chief, Police Chief Herb Street to purchase 12-month, 24/7 service contract from Nelson Systems of Springfield, a cost of $3,105.81. I'd like to make that a full motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Fourth motion was to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to sell the self-contained bottles of air to Mount Auburn and any other area communities if interested for a dollar per community. I'd like to make that a full motion.
Okay, you have a second on that one?
Second.
Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Larry Dorchenaz.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to align service connect to disabled veterans' free rental at the cabins, overnight camping, or tent camping not to exceed two weekends each session, each season.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? One comment. Go ahead, Alderman Jones.
I know that this has worked well in the past. Have you found any instances of where someone has wanted the free rent and then not been there?
No, no, they usually book a cabin and then stay.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure, you know, since we're offering this service to those who, you know, given to this country, that...
Several individuals that utilize that every year, and I have one particular individual that would like to bring his camper instead of using a cab.
Okay.
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Rodney Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Last motion was to approve the purchase of sixteen batteries from Interstate All Battery Center at the cost of fifteen hundred and six dollars and forty cents. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that one?
I'll second that with a comment, Your Honor.
Well, Walters, go ahead with the comment.
For the purposes of the press that's here, if I'm correct in reading this, this is for the upgrade or repairs to our storm towers, our, I call it our tornado warning towers.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?